The Irons and City Council meeting March 15, 2025. With us this evening are invocation is Reverend Jeffrey Carins from the City Mission Church. If everyone will stand or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the following. Reverend Carins?
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come to you today and invite you to this meeting of our city council. We pray, Father, that you give guidance and direction and understanding on each issue. Father, whatever might be accomplished here, we pray, Father, that you would lead and guide and direct. We pray now in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, and thank you for all the City Mission does for our city and community and around me. Thank you.
I. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Ariel.
Here.
Clary.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Here.
Nate.
I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session to discuss litigation with Solicitor, Mayor, Finance Director, and City Engineer, followed by executive session to discuss contracts with Solicitor, Mayor, Finance Director, City Engineer, and Mike Aller with action to follow.
Jacob.
I'll sign that motion.
Do those motions. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Clary.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye. If you all will be adjourned until executive session.
Thank you all for your patience. With us, our next is approval of minutes for the regular council meeting minutes of February 27, 2025, and the finance committee meeting minutes of February 27, 2025. Any errors, omissions, additions to those minutes? Here are them, those in standing as approved. Next is our quarterly engineering update. With us this evening is our city engineer Kevin Lee from IBI. Kevin?
Thank you. May I ask me to come and run through a quick update on the projects going on in town? Of course, the big one, the Green Valley project is moving forward. We're getting closer to seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. The contractor's substantial completion date is May 29. We had a meeting yesterday. They told us they are attempting to meet that date, so we're hopeful they're working to mobilize some of the unpaid, or stabilize some of the unpaid streets here in the coming weeks. The unpaved portion of Thomas and Cliff, which was not curbed before, will be curbed, although with an inch and a half curb, so that people can drive over it to park off the street as they did before it was curbed. That street will, when the curb goes in in the coming weeks, you will see it, but it is at least as wide as the pavement was before, or a little bit wider in some areas. It will look more contained when it's curbed, but, and it may look a little odd because it won't be a six-inch curb like everywhere else, but in order to accommodate everyone who parks off of that street, it will have a reduced height curb on it. There are three contracts: Bath of the Road and Street Project, the Pump Station Project, and the Orchard Sanitary Lift Station Project. The, you've seen probably the frame of the building for the pump station. If you've been over there, that is up. So, we wouldn't be surprised if they, contract one and two might need a little bit of an extension. Wait, once they get pumps here, they have to test them and all, but in the coming months, it will be winding up. The big achievement will get paid, be to get the pavement down, so, and then get that pumps system operational. The Third Street Water Line, if you've been to that end of town, you've seen that as well. That has a July 1 substantial completion date. And I should note, I put on here the funds, the grant and loan funds for each of these, so you kind of have a good idea as to what those are. If you've been over on South Fifth Street, the city received a grant to pave that, several blocks of that street. That was a specific ODOT grant that required, unlike the previous paving the city did, and to make your money go as far as you could, you just milled and paved the center of driving lanes. This grant required that you pave curb to curb, and that you fix all of the ADA ramps along that way. So you'll see the ramps have been fixed here in the coming weeks and months. They'll be paving that once the asphalt plants.
So that has to be milled?
Yeah, the whole street will be milled like all your others were, and then new pavement put down. And they're replacing some of the catch basin grates and things like that. The wastewater plant Slus Gate is ongoing. Pump Station Seven, you've got the critical infrastructure grant for that. That will bid in April. The emergency generator at the wastewater plant, the delivery of the generator is expected in June, but construction of the base and the work with the electrical has begun. We are working on design of an emergency generator at your water treatment plant. We anticipate that will go out to bid in June or July. The Truck Wash Bay Building, the permit will be going into the EPA next week.
Is that the city, is that the city garage?
At the, I think that's the wastewater, yeah, yeah.
Street Sweeper?
We just moved it down there, down there because we need to leave that land out of the city garage.
Going for the Street Sweeper?
Yeah, yeah. I'm going through these pretty quickly, so feel free to stop me for questions. The Fifth Street Bridge Replacement, Howerton is preparing the bid documents. I just this afternoon got an email, a draft email from them of the bid documents to me and ODOT for review. Once those are reviewed and ODOT gives the okay, that project would be able to go to bid. And in regards to that project, it's, we marked where the trees need to cut over there so that that can happen before the end of this month, which kicks in the back tree restriction, so the city staff is going to cut those trees down this month. The city also received a $250,000 ARC grant for some paving, and the project that is going on right now will rebuild that street from Storms Creek up to Lorraine. This grant is going to be Ice Creek, sorry, to Lorraine. This grant will be used to mill and fill as far north as you can go from Lorraine with that 250,000. And like the South Fifth Street project, it's ODOT grant, so it requires you to pass the ADA ramps through there as well. We anticipate it will go about from Lorraine up to that, to Dayton Lane. It's about 1,000 feet. It's not a lot, but. And then we are working on design of the, where the Storm Pump Station is going, the former Rice property, working on design of a street and water and sanitary and storm and sidewalk through there to prepare that for housing development, as well as design of a lift station and sanitary sewer project from Ellison down Fifth to Cliff. The water meter upgrades, I had forwarded an email just yesterday. We're waiting for some answers from OWDA and EPA on the terms of the loan for that. The Riverfront Project, Allard will be here tomorrow to do tree clearing there, again to beat the, in this case, March 15 deadline of having trees cleared. So you'll see some work there tomorrow on the riverfront as the design and permitting is ongoing. We are, I need to get a proposal to the city for a storm sewer rate analysis, so I will be working on getting that together.
Is that the ER noise?
Yes, yep. We're having on, we have another call next week with the agencies regarding the, this consent decree. That's ongoing. And that will affect, the last item on my list here, as it relates to wastewater plant improvements, we've talked about the Phase One improvements. The size and scope of those improvements will be dependent on the outcome of these conversations we're having with the agencies. We're trying to convince them to allow more, well, we're trying to convince them to require less infrastructure construction, smaller storage tanks.
Same amount of restrictions as everywhere else in the United States.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're working hopefully toward getting an answer on that so we can, we know what you're going to be required to build. We've worked with John Taskins. He has his five-year CIP, and the items I listed there are the items that we feel we could have ready to bid come August, so we can submit that to EPA for, to request a principal forgiveness grant. There are many other items on that list, but those are the items through working with him that we carved out, and it's a little under $2 million worth of items. And then the digester and trickling filter improvements as well are projects that we will, in the coming weeks, months, need to develop a proposal to you all for if you wish to move forward with those. So that was real quick, but.
Thank you, Hany.
Kevin, appreciate your update. Can you give a quick explanation of the driveways and how we're not actually pumping water, it's not actually draining yet, so that's why people may have been saying it's standing water, driveways?
Yeah, so Commissioner Hany was asking me up on Karen Street as part of the Green Valley, or we call the Batman Lane project. There are a few driveways on the north or west end of Karen, depending on how you look at it directionally, that actually slope from the curb back toward the sidewalk. That's a high point of the entire project, not only Karen Street, the entire project. So when the new street was built, that center line profile and the curb and all of that is, is at the high point, which caused a few of those driveways to slope toward the sidewalk. So we surveyed where the concrete drive apron meets the sidewalk. We surveyed both edges of that concrete apron and had the contractor install, you'll just see a black pipe sticking up there now. It will be a yard drain, so that any water that would drain from the curb down toward the sidewalk will make its way to that low spot, and it ties into the new storm sewer. In the coming weeks, you'll see the contractor cut that off and saw an actual yard drain there, and that's the low spot between the curb and the sidewalk. None of the storm sewers that have been constructed are operational yet, because they all drain down to the very low spot at Thomas Street, and then into that new pump station, which is not yet operational. So none of that system is, is. So none of that system is is working yet. Once the pumps are installed, the building's done, this project is completed in the coming weeks and months, then we can turn those pumps on, we can open up that storm collection system and it will be operational. Until then, you know, none of those are draining anything. If any water makes its way into it, it's going to go to the low spot and sit. And before they start up the system, we require that they camera it and clean any silt and debris and any of that out, which undoubtedly there probably will be some in there.
Thank you for that explanation. A couple of other things just while we're going down this, let's not go ahead and get it that way. So anywhere you see ramps, the ADA ramps, that's going to get paved. Because I've gotten a lot of questions about those ramps and I said, basically, anywhere you see those ramps, that street's going to get paved.
Yeah, there are multiple blocks, I can't remember the street names there on South Fifth.
Mabel, right by Dennis Office there and.
Mabel, oh, yeah, that's from Ninth to Eleventh or Liberty where.
Yeah, on that.
And then Fifth from Walnut to Neil.
Right. Okay, what are they doing, what are they doing? Well, that's ADA branch, why haven't you project come up?
I did have, Allard told me today that Shelley Company told, or Shelley Asphalt told him that their plant's going to open April fifteenth and that that street is one of the first they have slated to pave. So hopefully by the end of April, South Fifth will be paved, was the hope.
Couple other things, Dayton Lane, that just got vacated, correct?
It's not, so it's old Dayton Lane, so Dayton Lane used to cut through the Ironton Iron property. That's the part that got vacated. The Dayton Lane still goes to Ergon.
Okay, gotcha. So, okay, that I take care of my question. Another thing is, what, I guess, is there a date to where the Riverfront Project will have? Would be in twenty twenty five? Like, will we have any type of opening or where there can be events or anything down there?
Not in twenty twenty five.
Well, then you're talking about infrastructure. Are you talking about?
I'm talking about.
The containers and stuff, yeah, it's.
This spring, okay. Any guess?
Well, which is from what, March twenty first to June? Okay.
Early spring.
We could, we could bring an operator in to talk about that.
Okay.
As long as I don't, I had to work.
Okay. I'm good, thank you, Kevin.
Anybody else? I'll follow up just on the Riverfront Project, so more on the other side of that, boat ramp side. Do we have any estimated timelines on that at this point?
Yeah, so the the ultimate deadline for that is all that federal ARPA money has to be spent by end of October of twenty six. And ILCAL, who is administering all these projects, that is the drop dead date that we are all working toward. And the very first construction that happened on any of their projects, and they have projects in multiple counties, was some tree clearing we had in Middleport yesterday because we are working through permitting. We have to get U S Fish and Wildlife approval and so we got an early approval. We told them we need to get these trees cleared before March thirty first because if not, we got to wait until November. So they have been giving us one by one approvals. They just today, we got the approval to do Ironton. And the window for Ironton actually ends the fifteenth. So Allard told us they would be here tomorrow to sell those trees. We have been working on the plan development. We anticipate having thirty percent plans on the Riverfront by the first, first couple of weeks of April. Once we get those done, our permitting people, they've been working with U S Army Corps and Fish and Wildlife and SHPO and State Historic Preservation and all those agencies. Once we get those to them, they can submit to the Corps, U S Army Corps. Or that's the big permit that we need before any construction can begin anything. Like the trees, they can cut them, they cannot remove the stump, they cannot move dirt, they can't do anything until we get that Corps permit. So that's the next big date that we're working for. Once we get that, we'll be working concurrently to finalize the plans so Allard can give us updated costs and we'll know exactly how much we can afford to do. So.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yep, thank you.
Next is our audience participation. If you'd like to address the Orange County City Council, please step to the podium, state your name and address. We'll have five minutes to do so.
Jim, Richway seventeen forty four, Kevin Street, Ironton. And I guess I just wanted a few things from the engineer about what I want to talk about, which is the construction down here in Center of Meadows, Green Valley. I have some concerns about the roadless and I guess at Green Valley had an incident not too long ago where an ambulance couldn't get to the person's house. They had to go out there and beg neighbors to move cars. I could give you the house name and address, but I'll do that off of record if somebody wants to hear it. But I just think that would be an absolute shame to see an ambulance show up. There are two blocks from the house, but they can't get there and meanwhile, somebody's having a heart attack and dying. You know, like, we just don't need that kind of situation. And Green Valley's messed up, I don't think, you know, there's any solution for that. But I don't want these sort of networks where I live done that way. And I think the smaller curbs are going to help. And if people will get their cars off the road and maybe you just have to literally force people not to park on the road. I know what situation will come for, but I would hate to think there's a fire situation. We have $6 million worth of equipment sitting at the fire station and it can't get to my house. I mean, you know, that's, that's a lawsuit wouldn't happen for the city. You know, you've got $6 million equipment and you can't get there from here. You know, and you're inside the city and, you know, you've been paying the fire fee. So I, you know, that's what I'm looking for. I think Thomas Street should be wider. You know, I don't know what, you know, what the exact width is, but if it's eighteen feet, there's only two ways out of the school system down there. One's Delaware Street. If there's a wreck on Second and Delaware, guess what? They're going down Thomas Street to leave school. And if they go down Thomas Street, which is eighteen feet, you need at least twenty one, twenty two feet by engineering standard to drive school buses on a two-way street. So, you know, you're creating a mess. And I would prefer you didn't create the mess and we didn't have to fix the mess. It's a lot cheaper to fix it upfront. And I don't know what the cost is for three extra feet to make it a twenty one foot road, but it can't be that substantial for a couple of city blocks. Especially if you need that for an emergency access for the school, which you have to have. I mean, the school's only got a long way out to Delaware Street and you got K through eight down there. And how are they going to get the school bus about? You know, it's, I don't think people are thinking ahead. I lived there. You know, if I didn't live there, I wouldn't be complaining. I hear a lot of people want to see me come complain because they don't have, they don't want to make waves. Everybody wants to be everybody's friend, which is great. But bottom line, you live there and you want to be able to have access to emergency services. I mean, if I get stuck and, you know, I'm ten minutes late here or there, that's one thing. But if the ambulance can't get to the house and one of my loved ones is sick and dying and they're stuck two blocks away because somebody put in an eighteen foot road nobody can use, I mean, that's a problem. If the house is burning down and the fire station's got this beautiful brand new fire truck and they can't get there from here, that's a problem. And the people in Green Valley are absolutely terrified about a fire situation over there. They may not be in here complaining, but they're terrified about it. Nobody wants to see a fire truck sit three blocks from your house and wet their house and stay home. So that's why I think we need to look into, I don't know if it's an engineer, it's really an engineering thing. The engineer wasn't here at the last meeting I was here at. Maybe he can address some of those issues. Certainly the smaller curbs is going to be a very good idea instead of a better area. That is to have some looking dry road. I mean, ambulance need be probably running right through somebody's middle of the yard. Ever in Green Valley, that's not happening. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Jim, I think we're, right now, we're relying heavily on our experts in the completion of that. So I, I hope that some of your concerns are quelled once it's finished. Okay?
Yeah, I'm just worried about, you know, what's, is the usability of it? You know, I mean, it's nice to have a nicely paved road, but if it's not usable, you know, and people are having trouble getting in and out and the fire department says, I don't know if we can get there from here, you know, that's one I'm worried about. Thank you.
Chris.
Kevin, do you care to, simulation level, what did you use to, to, what's the vehicle?
Yes, I know there was some concern expressed by one of the neighbors early on. That intersection, which is a little funky at Thomas and Fearsome, because yes, Thomas kind of jogs through there. There was some concern about, you know, trucks and school buses and things navigating that. And there's a, if we're designing a brand new city street, I mean, there's software or everything nowadays, but there's auto turn radius that I had our transportation group look at so that if a school bus were coming down Thomas and then hit Fearsome and navigated down. And it meets all of the requirements for school buses and trucks and, and I know it looks, especially with those curb inlets there now. And when the paint goes in, like I said, it's going to look like a narrow street, which it always has been. But through discussions with the city, we knew early on, there's a lot of gravel. You can tell people hark all through Thomas, that ended Thomas and Cliff off the street. So that's why it was decided. And with the grant that the city got, it's an EPA grant and loan and which will only pay for water and sewer, or water and sewer projects, this is a storm sewer project technically. The only way that the EPA agreed to even pay for pavement and curb is because we had to tear them up to put the storm in. So they will allow us to put back the width that's there. They wouldn't allow us to put a three main street or. So again, and we have the plans that show this, we can see the existing edge of pavement that was there before and where the curb is. It is as wide and in several places wider than where that edge of pavement used to be. And if there is some emergency that, you know, there's a huge truck that needs to get through or something, they can navigate, I mean, they'll easily roll up over the curb if there is an instance like that. But the streets are all at least as wide as they were before. They are just curved, although being with a one and a half inch curb that is easily drivable.
Yeah, I think that's a good caution to the neighborhood. I mean, if you come down and look like there's six of spurs in Green Valley, I don't think I'd want to hit them with my car.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Any others?
We're a car on Camrus, we're from down at three eleven Bath and Lane down in Green Valley. Basically, what's happened is roughly a month ago, started getting sewage through our basement, through our shower, onto the floor and through our toilet onto the floor, which created a mess. Needless to say, do as you do as a homeowner, you try to fix it, you know, plunge it, whatever. It didn't work, so a couple of days later, she called Littles, Road to Ruder to come out. They ran a snake through our, you know, toilet, they picked it up, ran a snake through it to see what was going on. Ran out in the yard and they could only get so far in the yard. So I told her, I said, well, it's on us, you know, if it's collapsed or there's a blockage or whatever. So we called Roger Heming Contractors to come up from down in Portsmouth. They come up, roughly where Road to Ruder remarked that there was problems there. They dug down and basically they come to the water line, which was only down about two foot, well, beside it, on down about eight feet roughly or so, they found my sewer. They end up hitting my sewer. It went into the yard a little bit, so I had to go below to patch it. In the meantime, they ran their snake with the locator on it, do it as far as they could go and it was plumb full. Once they found their locator, took it out to the street and found that it was outside the street, then we contacted, you know, the city. And when they come down to dig, well, I'll take that back. In the meantime, when Roger Heming went to patch my leak and found out where roughly it was at, in the meantime, I had contacted the city, Roger Heming had covered up where they dug out, which water line was there. So in the meantime, city, basically, Allard was going to come back down the next day to dig because it was already after hours, you know, it was dark, which was fine. We waited, of course, here we are without sewer for roughly four days. Come to find out, she went to go down to the basement a few hours later and our water, our basement was flooded with water because the line had collapsed where they had put the dirt back on the water line because we're so brittle. So basically, when they came out the next day, and we've got a ton of pictures and so does the city because they was down there also, they dug down by the street and sure enough, they had to replace a gap roughly four foot long that was plumb full of sewage. Now, in the meantime, my whole yard is dug up. My yard's not huge, but it was just constantly heavy equipment on my front yard. And I have no grass hardly in my front yard now. I live right across from Chris, he can vouch, you know, vouch for it. Of course, the night when all this happened, we had to, you know, cause ServPro to come in and suck it out because, you know, I had several inches of water in our basement. Thank God she went down there because if not, I mean, it would flood our whole basement, it'd come upstairs. And so basically what we're asking is, you know, what do we do? We've contacted several people, people, sorry. We're just at a point we don't know what to do now. You know, my basement's not livable conditions right now. It's, it came all the way out to my basement from one end to the other. There's a bedroom down there, there's a living room down there, the hall, everything's down there. And it's just not livable. I've got my mom that lives with me that's eighty years old and I'm not making an excuse for a crutch, but she's eighty years old, I'm trying to take care of her. And it's not breathable conditions for her. And, you know, we had to leave that night to go get a hotel room because we had no pool and no shower. So we had to leave for the night to get a hotel. And we're just in a pickle right now and I need to get my basement fixed. You know, I've already got estimate and it's going to cost roughly $30,000. And so basically I was told that I needed to turn in my insurance. Well, here's the thing on that, I get it, I get it, I'm a homeowner, I pay taxes. But a year ago, I had to claim, claim April the fourth, when that tornado or high winds come down through Green Valley, it done damage to my house, you know, picked up my three ton air conditioner unit, slammed it, tore it up, ripped off siding, ripped off fascia, soffit on my house. You know, I mean, I'm at a point where guys, where my hands are tied. You know, yes, I've got the insurance on sewage, but it don't cover the $30,000. All it covers is $15,000. So I'm in a pickle, you know?
All that, this solicitor, apparently, because they, we were aware of that. From, from a council perspective, it was kind of the contractors and the insurances and them dealing with it. And so I would bring them to us.
So, yeah, you need to make a claim with both contractors, the Allard contractor, I believe, also your Roger Hemings contractor. You can claim both and your insurance company. It's really not going to be a city issue. Those three insurance companies hopefully can take care of your issues.
Well, like I say, I mean, my insurance has already done the claim, they're covering up the $15,000 and that's it. Now I'm stuck with another $15,000.
The other insurance companies will be handling that. So you've got the insurance company for Allard and the insurance company for Hemings that should both be involved.
Okay, well, I contacted, I contacted Allard and I actually talked to Mike, which I didn't know who he was until a while ago when he was here. And very unprofessional of me on the phone when I was questioning about it. Treated me like I was a piece of dirt. And I said, sir, all I'm trying to do is get this resolved. And he basically told me, take it and stick it, in a nutshell.
Have you?
And that was from Mr. Mike Allard and I got written down on payment.
Have you contacted Hemings too?
What's that?
Have you contacted Hemings too?
Yes, Hemings is aware and I believe he said he's contacted Mayor Sam in regards to it. But like I said, I'm just, all I want to do, guys, I'm not here to complain, I just want to get it fixed where we can live in it. You know, it would happen to any of you guys that didn't have a basement no more, a livable basement. You know, I've got a sixteen year old granddaughter that lives with us, her bedroom's down there. Now she's sleeping on her couch on the main floor because she has no basement, I mean, cobed her. I just want it fixed, you know what I mean? That's it. Nothing else. And like I said, I've already got $15,000 coming from my insurance company, which I don't think it's fair because if they hadn't collapsed the line, I'd never went through none of this, none at all. I wouldn't have to hire ServPro, I wouldn't have to hire Roger Heming to come up and bring there, me and the excavator to dig down creek, creek, creek all day long, you know, plus pay their wages, which I already gave back to John Haskins because he wanted the receipts. I mean, I gave the receipts for staying in a hotel for the night. My mom, back to my mom, had to use a porta potty for four days because we had no sewer and had to put it in a trash bag and take it to my garage to keep it. I mean, that's just not livable conditions, you know? I mean, that's just not livable conditions, you know. So, I mean, I just, I just, like I said, I just want to get the other part taken care of and I'm done and you guys never see me again. But this is just not, it's just not, it's not right.
Well, thank you.
I'm sorry, uh, did you, when you contacted your insurance company, did your adjuster talk, discuss about the claim with Roger Hemings or are they going?
They didn't mention nothing to me when he come to the house. He went down and he adjusted the basement and everything, he took pictures and everything. Only thing he basically told us was, well, I mean, he didn't really say a whole lot about checking with any. Only thing he said, he said, if it comes down to it, what we'll have to do is we have to, if he said, and, and I don't want to, if we have to go after the city or after either contractor, what's what we'll have to do. But he said, but your basement will get taken care of one way or another from the three, one of the three in the triangle.
Your adjuster did?
Yes.
Good.
But all are one to give us fifteen thousand dollars yet.
Right, which is what your coverage limit is.
Because I showed him the estimate from Roger Heming and he's like, well, all you have is fifteen thousand dollars. Which is the max on my insurance on sewage.
So your adjuster is going to be advocating, working with you for the Roger Hemings and the Allards, is that correct?
He didn't really say much about Allard. I just showed him the estimate I had at the point in time through Roger Heming to replace every, you know.
So your adjuster's going to advocate and work with you for the Roger Hemings claim, is that correct?
Well, now, basically all they did was just said they was going to issue a check for the max of what I've got on it and that was it. That's basically all he's told us.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'm not telling you what, what to do, but if I'm telling you, if it was me, I'd reach back out to the adjuster because sometimes some of those legal services are covered, I know of. And they can work with you doesn't have to work with those claims for those contractors like Roger Hemings, which I'm not familiar with.
Right.
So if it was me, that, that's what I would do. Because I, I, I'm very sympathetic to your situation. I know it stinks and it's kind of a dominoes thing how it set off with the collapse to begin with and all these other events happen. But your, your insurance company, in my mind, should be an advocate for you to try to get this whole process resolved, including that claim with that subcontractor that you hired yourself. So that's, that's just me and I'm hoping it gets resolved for you guys, I'm very sympathetic. I hate that's going on for you.
Well, when this project all started, I talked to Chris a couple of times and I said, this is the best thing for our little subdivision area, you know, is getting new streets, getting new sewage and everything in and I, I, I'm still for it. I think it's going to be great for our little area, you know, be nice and clean and. But when this happens, it's just devastating, you know, I mean.
They need to fix what they're carrying.
Yeah, I mean.
Chris. Carl, I'm sorry you guys had to go through this. The most disappointing thing to me is the way he spoke to you because what we, what we just said, that he acted like he was very professional and polite in handling that issue. So I'm, I'm sorry on behalf of, I guess, Allard because what I heard is it was handled very professionally and you're saying the opposite, so.
I wish I could report it.
That's a different issue. I apologize that he would even act like that. I don't want somebody working in the city or contracted with the city that would treat a residence like that, so I apologize. Another thing, like, like Nate and Brigham are saying, is I, I believe with your insurance would work with, you know, like Brigham and Nate were both saying, those two entities and get the rest of the cost recouped through, whether it be seventy-five hundred through Allard, seventy-five hundred through Hemings or whatever. But I, but I would take, he, he does it for a living, so I would take his advice and reach back out to your adjuster and then have all three entities kind of.
Okay.
Yeah, but those are the.
Yeah, but that's all I'm asking, just try to get it, you know, replaced and then we'll be happy if we're ready to get it finished down there.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Good evening, my name's Aaron Guston, I live at seven South Sixth Street in Ironton. Here about the nuisance property at five twenty-two South Fifth Street. According to the recording from the last council meeting, there will be an update given today. It's possible to get that during comment or if we need to wait.
Um, that would come from the mayor, so if he wants to.
That's the point, but there's one more update and that's, and that's that we've given them a notice to comply. That's not all I can come up with, you know, other than with the sewer, we, we may have been wrong about, it may not have been sewer. So we're investigating that further. That's all I can say right now.
Is, solicitor, is there pending litigation on the five twenty-two house to your knowledge?
Pending litigation?
Yeah, any type of litigation?
No pending.
No pending.
That I'm aware of. Oh, just having a contact to check his earnings. I'm not speaking. There might be imminent litigation, but there's no pending, there's a difference.
Is there privacy protection for?
Imminent litigation, absolutely.
There is, okay.
Absolutely.
But our understanding is that it's not a sewer issue?
No, no, we're not a hundred percent sure yet, but the plumber has looked at it and it turns out there wasn't. So we are back on the far end because there is a possibility it might have been something to do with the soil and sand. We'll, we'll figure out if it is or not.
When, to your knowledge, was the issue first brought to your attention?
Four years ago.
I'm sorry, you said four years ago?
I said a couple of years ago.
Okay, a couple, two. Let's say safe estimate twenty-four months out, we don't still know exactly what the problem is?
We thought, we, so my previous wastewater superintendent said that it was a sewer line. Now this plumber checked it out, they've actually found another lateral going off to the other end of the house. So that's why they believe this is not. Uh, when they ran the lines and then the most recent wastewater superintendent believes it may be some type of sand. I don't know what he called it, but, but they're going to check and make sure whether it is or not. We're not a hundred percent that it is. So it's on us again to come back and look at it.
Is, is there a timeline for this?
Yeah, we can get around to it.
Awesome, fantastic, probably within, you think, twenty-four months?
Maybe.
Okay.
Mr. Guston, I think it's, I, I think it's kind of unfair to insinuate that we did nothing for twenty-four months when, when the issue by our department heads have been told to, whether it's his administration or any other administration, that the problem lies within the sewer on the homeowner and the home's been vacant, so there's been no one to, to check the line, there's been no one to pay for that. So I, I do understand your frustration, I do understand what you're saying. But, but to say like, we haven't done anything for two years, it's not necessarily that it was our problem. Now it's back in our court.
Okay. And is your belief that that home was vacant during that time period?
Um, at some, at some point it was for sale. So there wasn't, there wasn't someone that was there to, to service the line that I'm aware of.
The, the former property owner who lived a block from the house?
I don't know, I don't know the specifics of it.
He, he did. So we would not have had access to that property while it was for sale, the city, if there was, if that house was on fire, they wouldn't have been able to call in?
They would, that's a completely different situation, but yes. When it comes to infrastructure on the homeowners, on the homeowner's side, the city can't, cannot do that. When it comes to an emergency at the home, the city can't do that, so.
Do we believe that the property owner paid taxes on that property?
I would have no idea.
We would assume that they probably did.
Yeah, and that's accounting.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, to act like the house was just like no one owned it. Casey Combs owned the house during that time period, he was accessible. The, the realtor guy would have designed the paperwork to sell the house. So we would think they would be accessible if the street was, what we were told was falling in.
Yeah, and our recourse would be to, to suing to do it. And then, you know, those legal processes take a year and he'd be, already sold it. And then it'd be the, the Spiderman meme of everyone doing this, right? Which is, I mean, I mean, that's the situation that we're in.
You should. So if anything goes wrong with my property, I should list it for sale and then just, I'm in.
I'm not going to leave it.
Okay. Okay. Well, an unrelated concern, what is the policy on sidewalks being blocked by vehicles?
Should be against ordinance, there's areas of ordinance against blocking sidewalks.
There, yeah. I've, I've had a neighbor that had this specific thing happen. I know that there's been some latitude given because of homes that were built too close to the sidewalk and have a driveway slash garage that goes to their home. But by letter of the law, it's illegal to park on the, on the sidewalk. Um, do you have any other questions?
I, I appreciate the fact that we went into executive session for an hour and five minutes at the start of this. Certainly had to be addressed the four public comments, so I appreciate the delay there. Thank you, guys.
Any others?
Hi, you're welcome. Well, I'm Tommy Roberts. I am the promoter of Thunder on the River. And I was giving you the update on, went to Daytona, had a meeting with Indian, went great. Uh, I forgot to tell you all, last meeting, there is a webpage up, it's called thunderontheriver.net if you want to check it out. Uh, we also have an event page on Facebook. And I want to give you all the band lineup if that's going to be coming to town. Little dog catching one. All right, so far, opening night for the Wednesday night on the twentieth is, the band is called Jazzman Kane and Hot Rod the Bill.
The twentieth of August.
Thursday night is Emily Ferguson and the Boys and Courtney Joe Band. Friday night is Emotional Jammy and Good and Stout. And Saturday night is Green Fed opening up for Charlie Bonetti the Third. These are real well-known acts, I mean, they're not multimillion dollar recording artists, but they are well-known in the music industry. Like I discussed before about the bike games and, you know, stuff like that, I passed out. Flyer's passed out while I was down in Daytona. People were interested, it's something new, it's catching everybody's eye. And I'm still estimating between twenty to forty thousand. Like I said, on, uh, the Flyer's been on Facebook. Chris Perry's got a copy of the Flyer and also got a copy of the band list. We are doing a Miss Thunder on the River contest. Anybody aged that's between eighteen years and older. So, and, and then opening night, we're planning on doing a ride in. So if anybody's got a bike that wants to ride, we're meeting at the old Ark Hill Shopping Center at four o'clock. Kickstands will be up by five. And we're going to ride down Park Avenue, down to the riverbank and kick everything off with the National Anthem and all that good stuff. And I still tried to get ahold of, I called Ark High School and left a message for the band instructor to see if the band would be in there at the point of the National Anthem, I haven't heard nothing.
And there's also, just FYI, if, if the band turns you down and you want Ironton High School involved, there's also a varsity singers group. And I just know from experience with the Ironton Little League, they've come out and sang the National Anthem for many days and stuff. So that may be a second option for you.
Okay. I've got a conference from the Air Force, there will be a flyover. And I got a confirmed email from the US Army, they are going to do a flyover with Black Hawks. But that's pretty much what I got next week. I got a meeting with Harley Davidson Corporation, I'm meeting with their marketing director to see about getting, hopefully I'm going to use Indian as a leverage to get them down there. But from what Indian's marketing guy told me was that they are planning on bringing in their full crew, their demo bikes, everything down. And they are wanting me to plan a, about four or five routes within the county so they can take people on, take people on rides on the new bikes that are returning itself. And I did talk to the sheriff's office, I talked to Sergeant Wilson about helping with security. He said that's fine, he can cover what, once I talked to Ironton, the police, Ironton's police chief, he said whatever they can't cover, he can make sure they can cover it. So that, that's taken care of.
Any questions for Mr. Allard?
I will give you this for, that's the manager's email.
Okay. Thank you.
Y'all heard you.
You too.
Moving on to communications, there are none, reports, there are none, ordinances, if the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-five fifteen, first reading by title.
Directing revenue received from the state of Ohio pursuant to Ohio Revice Code Chapter thirty-seven eighty to be deposited in the general fund of the city and declaring emergency first reading.
Hey. Discussion.
Yes.
Uh, I just want to note that this came from guidance from the auditor's state's office, the, has this pass of direction of those revenues.
And, and I think, I think that, um, that's marijuana revenue, correct?
Tax, yes.
Um, and I, I think, I don't know if it was unintentional, if it was just a recommendation, but, but I felt all along that, that any, any windfall of, of money that we get should support, at least in part, the police. And since the police are out of the general fund, I think that's a wise decision, Chris.
I just wanted, the guidance, they said those funds are not going to be restricted at all as far as how they happen to spend. So that's why kind of the recommendation was general fund.
Yeah. But for us specifically, it makes sense.
Agreed. Chris.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and give ordinance twenty-five fifteen, second and third reading by title only.
Bob.
Second motion, give second, third reading by title only.
Roll call.
Brown, Clary, Cheney, Harvey, Doc, Quine.
Aye.
Rules have been suspended to give ordinance twenty-five fifteen, second and third reading by title only. If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-five fifteen, second and third reading by title.
Directing revenue received from the state of Ohio pursuant to Ohio Revice Code Chapter thirty-seven eighty to be deposited in the general fund of the city and declaring emergency second reading. Directing revenue received from the state of Ohio pursuant to Ohio Revice Code Chapter thirty-seven eighty to be deposited in the general fund of the city and declaring emergency third reading.
Chris.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five fifteen.
Bob.
Second motion to adopt.
Roll call, please.
Brown, Clary, Cheney, Harvey, Doc, Quine.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-five fifteen is adopted. If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-five sixteen, first reading by title.
Requiring residential rental unit licensing and inspection and declaring emergency first reading.
I know this is first reading and I don't want to discuss it today, but I'll just, I told Chris I've come through it and I want to point out just a few things. And specifically in section six dash, six A one, there is a question mark on the end of business registry number. Is that intentional, unintentional, or is that?
Yeah, just for clarification, I really, this wasn't ready to be on the agenda, but it's okay, it's okay. It's because everybody netbooked or giving input or whatever, just so we can get this.
Did they have a, John, do they, do businesses have a registry number once they do register? Are they assigned a business registry number?
I'm not sure if they're assigned a number.
So maybe that verbiage instead of saying, I'm guessing your question mark was there for that reason, Chris?
One hundred percent. This is not finalized at all.
Just maybe something along the lines, break them of attestation of business registry, which means they say, we've registered. Because if they don't, if they're not assigned a number, they should at least attest to the fact that they've registered as a business. Are you, is that good, or would you recommend some other verbiage?
And for landlord name, business registry number. With the business registry.
Yes, attestation of registering with the business registry.
Yeah.
Okay, and then section six A, or section six C. I didn't see anything in there, Chris, and I know you've, Nate, I think you've looked at this.
I've looked through half of it.
Okay.
That's the part I've got.
So I'm just seeing some input on six, I feel like there's an deficiency in six, six C regarding zoning violations. It's not called out specifically, and I feel like, I feel like.
Well, in C three, it says fines due and others.
Right, but that's, but that's if they're fined and owed.
Okay.
But I would like to specifically call out, like down here where it says something about the request can be, or shall be denied if the city makes an affirmative determination of blah, blah, blah. Like I would like to see something added about also can be denied if there is any violations.
I'm, I'm good with it. If, if you, you have the document, correct?
I did.
If you want to get on there and make that change, and, and how do you want to? And I'll read the whatever ones, I mean, like I said, this really wasn't.
I won't, I won't press on, I, I just, I will, I'll motion to amend, I just want to.
Do you want to strike this one and then?
Nah.
Yeah, I've got a lot of issues with this.
Okay.
I've got it when these came out, when the agendas came out. And I kind of tried to read through it, I'd really like to have some executive session discussions on it, just because, you know, I, I don't see, I see the purpose is staying in here. I've got some other issues with it, just too many to just say here and have you.
Maybe, yeah, maybe a workshop then.
Yeah, let me tell you one of them, let me, off the top, is section six where it says, I've got highlighted, shall apply to the city finance division in writing, accept request, I have this, and how to do it. I don't know that the, our finance department, and then, we'll never hear, I don't think they're too charged to get the license or not. But still, I don't know if the city, I don't know if finance has got.
There are some things that on the, on my, what I'm working on, there are a lot of things highlighted that you don't see highlighted on this that I had questions about. So I'm good with striking this and adding input because that was one of them. There's gonna have to be some type of, because we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to pay.
Rob.
This will be too different, this will be zoning and.
Which I think lands in the sweet spot of strategic planning. Yeah, I think we could, I think we could.
Right, or the next meeting?
We could just call one for that, for that purpose only, to workshop this rather than do it tonight.
Yes, I'm good with that. I'd rather, we strike this. I didn't, I was wanting to get it on the next agenda, but that's fine, or we can amend it, but that's one of, or we'll have amendments.
Yeah, you're right.
I don't know if we go ahead and give it first reading.
We did.
Okay, I missed that, check my notes. So if you do, if you give it first reading, that means that everything, the word, sounded like we're on the same page.
One hundred percent. This was, this was, I was definitely not ready to give this, for one, I wasn't. I was, I was in my email, I was saying I'd like to get ready for the following meeting.
All right. We want to just, we'll motion to, we don't table, we strike it, is that right?
Yeah. Make a motion to strike ordinance twenty-five sixteen.
Jacob, second that motion. Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-five sixteen is stricken from the record. And Robbie, do you want to try to do a strategic planning, planning meeting regarding ordinance, former ordinance twenty-five sixteen regarding residential rental units prior to the next meeting, or would you like it an off-cadence?
I would agree, I would say either, if we wanted to do it the same day as the next meeting, like before, we could do, I don't know how early everybody can do, because I think we'll need some time for that.
I agree.
Or we can do maybe.
I think five o'clock would be.
Five o'clock, and then, because we're probably gonna have finance, if we have forty-five minutes. If everybody reviews this and gives me, and has their input ready, that would be, forty-five minutes would be enough time for me to take it back, get it, and then get it to the solicitors and whatever.
I don't recall, besides you and I who's on strategic planning, but as long as we can be there, that's a core, probably. But if you want to call that, I don't know. Jacob, you're on.
Okay. Do you recall that now, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope I can call that meeting then for the March twenty-seventh at five P M here in Council General.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance twenty-five seventeen, if the clerk could please give that first reading by title only.
Amending the temporary budget for the city of Arken State of Ohio for the fiscal year in December thirty first twenty twenty-five and declaring emergency first reading.
I just, I would like to make a motion to kind of switch. Do you?
Deviate.
Deviate from the, the agenda that we currently have and have ordinance twenty-five thirteen red.
Motion, then motion to strike the first reading.
Motion to strike the first reading.
And deviate.
Ordinance twenty-five seventeen and deviate from the regular council agenda and have ordinance twenty-five thirteen red first. Okay.
Jacob, second that motion.
Did you get all that already? I'm suffering, I'm feeling extremely difficult right now.
Motion, motion to strike the first reading of twenty-five seventeen, deviate to do twenty-five thirteen first. We're gonna do that now. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Twenty-five seventeen first reading did not happen, and we will have ordinance twenty-five thirteen second reading by title only, if the clerk could please give that second reading by title.
To adopt the permanent operating budget for the city of Arken State of Ohio for the fiscal year in December thirty first twenty twenty-five and declaring emergency second reading.
Chris?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and give ordinance twenty-five thirteen third reading by title only.
Bob? Second motion.
Discussion.
Yeah, just, last meeting I had some issues with specifically forgivable loan, our forgivable loan, when we have an economic development and also Christmas operation plan. Just want to express that that was brought up in, with a desire of being more conservative in our spending habits and also making sure that we are, in my opinion, maybe being a little bit better on how we appropriate that forgivable loan especially. But with that said, tonight I am going to move forward and vote in favor of this because I think we need to function, we need to be able to move forward as a city in our face of shutdown. So that's why we are moving forward. I will vote in affirmative of that vote tonight, for that reason. For you, John.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Rule been suspended to give ordinance twenty-five thirteen sec, or third reading by title.
To adopt the permanent operating budget for the city of Arken State of Ohio for the fiscal year in December thirty first twenty twenty-five and declaring emergency third reading.
Chris?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five thirteen.
Bob? Second motion to adopt twenty-five thirteen.
Do you have discussion? I just want to mention that it was given favorable recommendation by the F I S G. Okay. Any others? Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-five thirteen has been adopted.
Make a motion that we strike ordinance twenty-five seventeen from the agenda.
Jacob? I'll second that motion. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-five seventeen that never got first reading, that's stricken.
Got a strikeout.
No, we only had two.
We got three, that's two Ks.
Foul tip the last one. Okay. Ordinance twenty-five thirteen has been adopted. Next, we have resolutions, and there are none. Next is miscellaneous, I want to mention two things quickly. City cleanup text message went out today, thank you Terry. March eighteenth through twenty-second, nine to five, does that include Saturday? The five, I know sometimes it's shorter, but at the city garage, one truckload per utility bill, so make sure you take advantage of that. And then Mayor, I had somebody ask me about, now that it's festival season, Lawrence Street Road being traveled a whole lot more, and there's a tree that sits on the, when you're turning on the Lawrence Street, sits on the left side, that's collapsing into the street. And I, I don't recall if there's a tree line, a tree lawn there, but there's, I don't think there's a sidewalk down there. We can, we can just have somebody look at it and see if there's anything we can do to remedy that.
Yeah, thank you, we're, we're gonna be cutting some trees for fitting on the fish tree, so we're gonna do that way. Because we gotta do that before back season.
Okay.
So we may be able to do it during that time.
Chris, I have a question for the solicitor, this comes from the high school bus garage. Yeah, and you probably know where I'm talking about, Gager's Corner. They can't make the turn without going onto the corner, Devil's Alley, or whatever you want to call it, tree line, whatever. Is, what is, who, and I hate that we're tearing it up, but it's, I mean, it's the school that's taking, you know, responsibility. They kind of wanted to do something about it for, one, for his property, and for two, the buses that are having good trouble. Is, what's, that's, I know that's kind of.
So I understand the question.
The buses are going through the corner, okay, so the corner tree line.
Gager, Gager Jones?
Yes.
He's blinded and he knows.
He sees it, he sees, he knows, he knows. So the buses can't make the turn.
That's a tough turn right there.
So most of the time, the back wheels, and it's, there's a dip, and when it's muddy, you know, when it's raining, mud. So it's, it's created like a rut, but the school kind of has said they would, wouldn't like fixing that for but ha, property, would he have to agree?
He definitely had to agree to that.
I mean, that's an agreement that they would have to make, or is there anything, maybe with the city?
I would say the city has an easement through a portion of that, I don't know how far back it goes into his lot. His lot, his house is really close to the, to the street. But I'm sure there's an easement at least on the tree line right there.
How would you go about, would you contact the property owner first and say, listen?
Yeah, here's what we want to do, but are they wanting to widen the street there?
No, I, I don't know if they're wanting to concret it or.
I'm thinking it's something like, we did at Maple, remedy that, remedy that corner, how is that then? How is that then?
How was that though?
We cut the yard out and.
Then where?
I mean, that was a situ.
It sounds like. Long noisy turn, it's kind of the same situation.
Because there's buses going around that turn, and that's where all the buses park on, what is that?
Have that worked?
Yeah.
It's been there for ever. What, the buses get bigger or?
Get bigger, bus driver.
I tell you what, no, seriously, in all, in all seriousness, it's the traffic over there. It's the people, because there's a multi-unit house, pompous, and so there's more cars there, so it, so. They need to be the stop sign.
No, I'm not saying they need the stop sign, either the park, they either, they need either painted curbs or something like we did on Maple and Liberty.
I think either one.
I would say when you cut through there, like we did that one, just, just give it the logistics of that.
Maybe paint the curbs or signs.
It's just because the cars park in there.
It, it makes it extremely tough for them to get when they're parked.
Especially on the other side, because that's a multi-unit, but they have the signs, just that they can park on, that they can park on fifth or sixth.
I see.
And so they're cutting that.
So buses have to cut it, they don't want to stay on the street, not hit the.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Appreciate it. Why do you?
I got this late. I'm just informative, no back and forth discussion. I, I heard that five twenty-two is a nuisance property, I just want to make sure that you understand a property that is a nuisance property is which three or more nuisance activities, A or two, twelve, D activities happen. And I do not believe that five twenty-two is a nuisance property.
We have, we have any nuisance report?
No, I don't even see anybody outside, just a bunch of cars. The nuisance is people call it.
And then, is Chief Johnson, does he have a log of nuisance properties?
Uh, yeah, but I, so I think the only thing that I know that we've maybe responded to is what he was alluding to is that someone parked up on the sidewalk.
Okay. Okay.
Roll call.
Miscellaneous. One last thing, I just want to mention, it's, as you come off the bridge that has all new lighting, it's really evident how many streetlights we have out downtown. I think we got a, Jacob, what's going on with that?
The, particularly on Adams Street, it's something to do with, like, we run into this issue in two parts of downtown. All the lights go out at once, it happens a lot around the courthouse on Center Street and, or on the Sheriff's Department, too. But Adams Street, there might be one, if you're talking about Jefferson, I don't know.
I don't think it's actually one Jefferson, but as you're coming off the bridge, you know, you have all that great lighting, and then you, it becomes real evident how dark it is.
Yeah, so, and we've got, I mean, we've got something on hand, I think, but it's constantly happening.
It almost seems like it could be a whole circuit, might be.
That's what happens too, it's, and until we notice it, it, so I'll bring up the mic, but I noticed yesterday Adams Street, particularly, it was like that, and it's happened, I don't know how many times in five years.
Yeah, maybe just looking into all the streetlights, I think would make a big difference on problems.
Well, then we get your mic back here to talk to you about.
Strike it. Somebody's taking my motion for a lady. Jacob, second. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
No.
Thank you for Jackson, just FYI, typically never last this long, but I.
Yeah, I know.